Would everyone join us in a pledge of allegiance?
Pledge allegiance to the fire of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Glad to have everyone out this evening, beautiful day, nice fall day, ninety-five degrees. A bombing ninety-five. But relief's coming, they tell us, we're waiting to see. First off, if I'd like to do anything else, I'd like to introduce our board members and staff that are here this evening. For those of you who may not know them, most of them, I'm sure do know them, but you know. At the far end is Barry Wilkerson, our board member. Next is Vice President of the Board, Rick Curry. Next is Mr. McKibb, our Superintendent, Jeff McKibb. To my left is Carol Bellers, a board member. Rodney Baker, he's on the phone with us, he's on a trip tonight. So, he's with us on the phone here, in some faraway exotic place.
Not Carol Smith.
What did I say?
Neil.
Did I really? I'm gonna blame that on Mr. O'Donnell. Now, we were talking about her earlier, so Carol Smith is doing this. And I'm Steve Priestley. I'm not gonna say something else, but I'm not gonna do it. Thank you for the wonderful lunch and dinner we had this evening, I guess that's what it is, a dinner or something like. We appreciate it. We were told when we first came in out here, when they told us, we didn't have to pay to get in. That we were gonna have a taco dinner, so we do appreciate that, Mr. Mathis, and all those that were involved. I notice Carrie was doing most of the work back there. Seth and Mike were doing most of the eating, so I guess that's okay. But we are thankful for your hospitality. Okay, what we're gonna do tonight is, of course, we're having a regular Board of Education meeting, but one of the things we're gonna do tonight is we're gonna conduct two local school improvement council meetings. For those of you that don't know, LSICs are required of all schools in West Virginia, and have been for several years. It gives the opportunity for every school to meet with their local Board of Education and share experiences and their things such as achievement and other activities that are going on at the school. And it gives the Board of Education the opportunity to visit schools and to see things firsthand, and get the things that are going on. So, that's beneficial to us certainly, and it's informative, obviously, because of the things we learned here. Now, what we have typically done, we're doing here tonight, is here in the Lincoln County High School in Hamlin PKA, we do those on the same evening, and we alternate those back. So, this year is the high school's turn to host, so that's what we're doing tonight. But, being gracious and the person that he is, Mr. Mathis has chosen to let Hamlin PKA go first, so I wanna introduce him, Lori Hutton, who is the principal at Hamlin PKA. Lori? Okay, I'm sorry. Before we, Lori, just, you just, you get right to it, you don't have to leave, just wait just a second. We want to approve the minutes of the September twenty-fourth, two thousand nineteen meeting, is that a motion?
I'm moving.
Okay. Ms. Smith made the motion, Ms. Wilkerson seconded that, oh yes?
Yes.
I'm sorry, I do that all the time, I didn't talk too much, I forget. Usually Riley tells me, I believe that. Hey, y'all, it's Kate.
Good evening.
Yes, sir.
I'm Lori Hutton, I'm the new principal at Hamlin PKA. Been in this job less than a month, so you have to bear with us. This is Mrs. Carrie Bates, our new assistant principal, been on the job almost two weeks tomorrow. So, we will do our presentation, hopefully we can answer all questions afterwards, so. Our mission statement for, and we changed this last year, and we continue to do this, so creating leaders that will positively impact our world. Now, the first thing that we've got up here, this is our West Virginia Summit of Assessment data from two thousand eighteen nineteen. The top part of the report is the ELA, you can reprocess it, go through. Grade three, forty students were tested, thirty-five percent were proficient. Grade four, fifty-two students were tested, fifty-four percent of those were proficient. Grade five, fifty-two percent, fifty-two tested, fifty-four percent proficient. Grade six, forty students tested, thirty-eight percent proficient. Grade seven, fifty-four students tested, forty-three percent proficient. Grade eight, sixty-two students tested, fifty-six percent proficient. Then we go down to math, same number of students, of course. Grade three, out of those students, forty-five percent were proficient. Grade four, not where we wanted to be, but in these, nineteen percent proficient. Grade five, twenty-nine percent proficient. Grade six, forty percent proficient. Grade seven, forty-one percent proficient. Grade eight, thirty-two percent proficient. The science, of course, it's only given in the fifth grade and the eighth grade. In fifth grade, we had twenty-nine percent proficient. Grade eight, we're really pleased with, because this number exceeded the state proficiency as well. Fifty-two percent of our eighth graders were proficient in the science test. So, that was a plus for us. The next slide, since we are done on the growth model, what Mrs. Bates and I have done, we took the data from two thousand seventeen eighteen and compared it to last year, so we can see the percent of growth that we had with those students. So, the first one, the students were in grade three in two thousand seventeen eighteen. Last year, they were actually fourth graders. So, they increased their proficiency by seven percent. Fourth graders in two thousand seventeen eighteen scored thirty-nine percent proficient. That grades the fifty-four, which is a gain of fifteen percent, which is huge for us. Fifth graders, they scored thirty-four percent proficient in two thousand seventeen eighteen, thirty-eight percent proficient last year, with a gain of four percent. Sixth grade, thirty-six percent proficient in two thousand seventeen eighteen, and that went up to forty-three percent, with a gain of seven, seven percent. Seventh grade, forty percent proficient, went to fifty-six, with a gain of sixteen percent. And I think, is eighth grade on there, they were ninth graders last year, so we don't have the data for that to see, you know, how they improved. I think it got, Mike kind of adjusted, I think it got cut off the eighth grader part there. So, with math, same type of information here. Third grade, we had forty-five percent proficient in math. It dropped to nineteen percent last year as fourth graders, so they, we lost twenty-six percent proficiency. So, that's something that we're really gonna work on, see what happened as far as what standards were taught, things like that. So, a lot of data, we're gonna go through that, make sure that we know what happened there. Fourth grade, in two thousand seventeen eighteen, we had twenty-five percent proficient, it went to twenty-nine, so it was a gain of four percent. Fifth grade, in two thousand seventeen eighteen, twenty percent proficient, it went up to forty percent. So, you can tell there, that twenty percent gain was huge. Sixth grade, twenty-five percent proficient, had seventh graders, forty-one percent were proficient, with a gain of sixteen percent. Seventh graders, twenty-nine percent, and last year's eighth graders, they scored thirty-two percent, or had thirty-two percent of those kids proficient, with a gain of three percent. And then, of course, the eighth graders in two thousand seventeen eighteen, thank you to the high school. This is our growth target that's set by the state. Two thousand seventeen eighteen was the first year that I was the assistant there. Thirty-seven and point three zero, that was the target, the growth baseline that we started off with. That year, our students actually came up with forty percent, forty point two six. Math, that year, we had twenty-three point eight two percent proficient, and it actually was twenty-eight point twenty-five. We met both those target rates in two thousand seventeen. And then, last year, our growth target went up to thirty-nine point seventy-one, and we scored forty-seven point nineteen, which was an increase of seven point forty-eight percent. So, we kind of, our growth target's kind of around two point three, something around that, so we kind of tripled that, so that was really good. And then, in math, twenty-six point seven five percent, and we went to thirty-three point thirteen, which we exceeded it by six point thirty-eight percent. And then, I put two thousand nineteen, so this coming year, our targets are up there, so we know what those are, what we're working for. Which we've already exceeded those this past year, so hopefully we'll continue the gain of seven to six percent, and keep our flow going. So, I'm gonna hand this off to Mrs. Bates, with plans to improve student achievement.
Okay, so, as a school, you're always wanting to improve, and so we're never gonna stop improving. So, number one listed up there is the LISA C I reading for our K through second graders. And then, of course, multi-tiered system of support, or the classroom, and the last year would be a pull-out. Two Title I teachers that are working with grades K through three. Imagine Learning, that's math, three through five, but we're doing that. The Khan Academy and Prodigy for our middle school students. We're gonna implement the ARIS resources, attendance incentives, there's grant and PTO money that are helping with those. Test talks, grades three through five, we actually pull the students and talk to them about setting goals, and where they were last year, and where they're gonna be this year. Leadership data notebooks, matter of fact, we're just kind of digging on that this evening. We're gonna have a data notebook night, where the students will actually conduct those meetings with their parents. Family Engagement Grant, again, we met this evening on that, have lots of cool and fun and interesting ideas about math help for parents, too. RSP, which is our Hatch for Success, next week, kids get to celebrate, oh no, if that's our first ballgame, yeah, they're gonna go to a home ballgame, of course, I'm coming, so they get to read and improve. We're rewarding them with that. Envision Math, that's a resource that we're using as well. Student Mentoring, we have student council members and possibly some of our National Junior Honor Society members that are able to start mentoring younger students. Student Wellness Activities, they have houses, skills classes that they have at the end of the day, and then, we implemented Read One Eighty and System Forty-four. I know that J Y S has two classes that she's doing with Read One Eighty with, as well. Challenges and Barriers, based on our data. Students not held accountable for the West Virginia Summit of Assessment. There's no states for that, so, you know, we want some teeth in that, and maybe say, hey, you've got to do better on this. Transient Foster Trauma, haunted homes are increasing as well, and that's always an issue. School Incentive Programs, Student Council, we just elected those members, their pictures are up, we had a meeting with them, they've done, designed T-shirts that they want to wear. It was really, really breathtaking to see how they were taking notes and taking charge. Morning Leadership Meetings, we are doing that, the whole student model comes in at the gym in the morning, and she does morning announcements, and then I do some leader meeting. The Leader and Meet Program, we set aside a meeting space to do that, and we are talking about those habits every day. Bobcat Leaders of the Month, they get a reward, we're taking them to gyms, they get to go to gyms. Hatch for Success Program, and that's done on a daily basis, attendance is also involved in that. Literacy Ladies, we actually have those ladies that come and greet the students on the elementary side, and the male mentors on the middle school side. And then, Imagine Learning, as well. And then, we're gonna go to Student Safety, these are things that we have in place to keep our students safe. Of course, we have the bus system at the entryways. I do swap cars for our employees. All students report to the gym in the morning, so we've got one centralized location where everybody comes in, and the teachers take those students to their classroom. They have station areas on the playground, we make sure that that's covered when they're out recess time, so no one can come on and, you know, take students away. Lockdown procedures are in place, we have a crisis intervention team, we have an evacuation plan reel that we practice, COGRI, things like that. Fire drills, we're doing ten per year, forge COGRI there. And we have, we changed our plan, so we can have new centralized locations that we will take the middle school students and the elementary students in case of emergencies. And then, of course, we do have our new phone system in place, which is huge for us. Facility needs, and I've sent those out, and we have put those into school dues. So, the first thing, a fence to enclose the middle school building to the cafeteria, because out back, that is a situation that people can run around, and it's open, they have access to the back of the building on either side. So, that fence would be huge for us. Walkway covering from the gym to the elementary building, because when we leave the gym for a morning meeting, we'll go back over to the classrooms on the elementary side especially. If it's raining, they have to go through the middle school and around to get to their classrooms. Updates to the middle school bathrooms, and that's something huge for me, because I think those bathroom facilities have been there for quite a while. So, I would like to see those amenities of the bathrooms updated for our kids, because I'm sure they've been there since, at least nineteen seventies, maybe. Painting between the two main buildings, just to make it more pleasant for kids as they go from middle school over to cafeteria. The facial wards need painted at the gym entrance. They're actually peeling, and we talked to the maintenance people, and I think that's something that we need to do just to get that to look better for people coming to our school. The gym needs painted, and I think that we're supposed to be getting a new floor, so I think I'll probably ask Armstrong to come out after we get that new floor, and they help us with our cafeteria and the main hallway in the middle school, if they can come out and do that, like a community project that could really do to help us, so.
Now, Lori, that would be ideal to come, not only you're gonna get a report of trust, and get new leaders. So, you, they have to coordinate that, when the old leadership will take them out, and then, pour the new ones in the floor and all that stuff.
Now, storage buildings, and I had talked to Mr. Rosson, he said that that's a thing that he's gonna be working on for us. A concrete pad for the cafeteria and gym, which of course goes back up to number two with covering, same area. LED lighting in the hallways, especially in the basement, the middle floor is really dark down there, so if we could get the LED lighting, I think that would brighten it up. And we painted it white, so it has brightened the basement up already, and we're putting a lot of murals and things like that to make it more pleasant for the kids. A double fence installed for the entrance onto the playground, goes from the road on the elementary side to onto the playground there, that one fence. I think Mr. Bates talked to George about putting the double one, so we could block one and, you know, travel inside, keep the pedestrians and stuff off the playground, especially during daytime. And multiple playground, that has been ordered, so I do know that's coming. And now, we just have some pictures that we'd like to show of the things that we've been doing for the past two, three years. Past two years, actually. Our mural, as you come into the middle school, Bobcat Nation. Our teacher, Mrs. Garrett, she ran out of paint, so that will actually go on up to the ceiling there. But, we wanted something, you know, to be nice when you come in and to identify us as Bobcats. And then, of course, Leader and Meet School, we have those banners, we have two or three throughout the school. But, that is the Leader and Meet tree that's over in the elementary, as you walk down to the cafeteria. Mr. Maynor, the art teacher that was there two years ago, he actually did this, it's beautiful. And we get lots of compliments on that, especially when we had the Leader and Meet folks last week, you know, they were really impressed with this, so. We put sayings throughout for the kids, you know, trying to motivate them. I don't know, a picture of that, turn. These are some of the things that we've been working on, just brightening things up. And our Daily Affirmation, we've worked really hard on putting worthy boards up that are encouraging to the students, and, you know, to get them to be respectful and just use those Leader and Meet skills. Our playground upgrade, I think one got cut off of that one, too. But, this was the newest piece of equipment that we raised money for two years ago. Hopefully, we're gonna be working on some brands, so that we can add to that, so the kids will have more equipment to use. There's the second picture. That was part of that natural playground log, so kids can actually get in there and they can look out, and they really enjoy getting there and playing. The cafeteria, this is painted it white, and we just added some decals, and most of these were actually paid for by our primary care, with our community partner upstairs. One of the big things that we're working on math for a lot is the multiplication challenge, and we do that with third, fourth, fifth grade. Last year, Mr. Bates, Miss Haykey, myself, each had a team, my team, Warren. They were able, they were able to do the multiplication tables, they did more of them than the fifth grade. This Bobcat mural and one of the path, those are upstairs in the middle school, because that's where we're working, like, to promote.
Start back here, there's two pictures.
Yeah.
Hey, look. And then, this one was the same thing, there were two pictures, one thought we'd done. I think when we switched it, they all slid in. There's your multiplication table, more sayings.
And there's our sign that means the last kid's, so.
This one is around, is around, wait.
And that's our reading areas, that couple of years ago, then we've added like the backgrounds of one. The kids really enjoyed it, too. And we have one on the middle school side, it's larger, on the third floor, that the size uses it for students. Kids love to go out there, just after they've completed work, and they get to read something that they have chosen. Now, bathrooms, of course, we have decals on all bathrooms, and we've got like B-nines, B-9s. This one's a big hero, the little guy was downstairs, kindergarten, first, second grade, used these, and they have taken really good care of them, I was really pleased, because they wanted to keep it nice.
Is that actually a good idea?
Yeah, as you kind, as you go through the door, you see, you spot around, and then, over in the bathroom, you got more superheroes and stuff, but they have taken really good care of those, so. And then, we added the conference room, that's where we hosted last week the Leader and Meet for the region. And then, of course, the pre-K cafeteria, that was added when we brought the pre-K students over, and that was probably one of the best things ever to happen for our school, because the guys made a huge difference. And the older kids want to take care of those kids, I know at first, you know, it was questionable, but it was. It was probably one of the best things for our preschoolers, to get to come to school, because they aren't there. So, that is just some pictures that we'd like, if you see what we've done, and if you'd like to come out and visit school, we'd be glad to show you around. If anybody has any questions, Mrs. Bates and I will try our best to answer.
Okay. You're great in configuration, how your structure's set up, are they self-contained, departmentalized, with variants?
Okay, K through five, well, K through three is self-contained for. Now, fourth and fifth, we have two teachers in each. One teacher does math and science, the other one does social studies and English language are. Sixth and eighth, of course, you know, they're departmentalized, so. But, I know with the fourth grade math, that was a huge issue for us, and I think probably we spent more time teaching certain standards, because we were under the impression when we gave CBA at the beginning of the year, those same standards would be blocked, would show up on the end of year, well, what? So, and our teacher, she cried, I mean, it really bothered her that those scores dropped. So, she's got better, she's the first-year teacher of four, so this year, I think she's got a better feel, and she knows that all those standards have to be, you know, or it's not just the ones that we thought were coming up on that.
Now, as far as being tested, the test that you're, that were given last year, that would be the same test as being given next year?
It should be.
But that's been some inconsistency there, it's kind of hard to compare when you're, you know, using different tests.
We'll start giving interim assessments, they opened up actually today. So, our teachers are starting giving those, so we can look at the data, and then we can adjust instruction according to those standards. So, that'd be a big thing for us, is that the data, looking at it, making sure that we are addressing all the standards in each one of the grade levels.
And how many students do you have?
Around four fifty-seven right now.
Now, I'm just trying to hurry, looking at some of their numbers here, to try to see any pattern, whether they're real or aren't.
I think after we give the summer assessment, if it stays the same, then we can kind of look at it and kind of get a feel for the pattern, way that. But, we're just really proud that we met both target goals again, and we exceeded the percentage, you know, we tripled what the expectation was. And by no means do we think that it's great, but we, I mean, we'll take small steps, and that was the whole point with the growth model, I think, so.
Well, if you're getting improvement, then also, you know.
And all our teachers are working really hard, and Mrs. Bates has been there for very long, but she can attest that those teachers really care, and that they want the best for our students, so.
Are there any members of your staff or LSIC here tonight?
We, no, we're gonna remap our LSIC, I actually just asked Sean if he would like to join, because with the new policies and stuff, it's changed, and I've got it, because we had some parent members that were our employees, so that has to change. So, within the next week or so, we're gonna get that, and get our new LSIC members added, and then.
Now, we've talked about that, the fact that so many of the laws of like, from last year, ominous bill, have changed things, but it really didn't give schools time to adapt in the school year, you know, we were doing things, we'd already planned things, so. And Mr. McKibb and I were looking at the LSIC meetings, and we kind of established them, that, you know, they've changed the rules on here, the composition of the LSIC.
Because usually, we've already met by now, and our first meeting and stuff, but since he gave the last principal's meeting, which was my first, we got the new policy, so we're gonna sit down, and we're gonna go through that, and make sure that we have the members, you know, that need to be on there and follow the policy.
That's understandable. Okay, well, everything's there, well, Mrs. Smith?
I'm still a little bit stuck on the third and fourth grade in math. Do you think that when they start in the third grade, do you think that they're, is that where they're lacking?
Well, our third graders scored really high last year in math, I think it was like fifty-seven percent proficient, I believe. We switched math textbooks last year, so that was the first year for Envision. So, anytime that you switch those math adoptions out, Mr. Priestley knows from my good principal as well, it always kind of goes down until they adapt to the new resources and, you know, are able to use those more effectively, I think. And we had more training this summer on the technology piece, so I think this year, we'll see a little bit more improvement, especially with those fourth graders that are now fifth grader. And we have the Imagine Marketing, that they're going down to the computer lab once a week, so they're using it there, and they're using it along with the Pearson as well. So, we'll, we'll make sure that we get those back up to where they need to be.
Very good, very good. Okay, if anyone has anything further, we appreciate y'all coming this evening. Next year, we'll kind of your home, and we do thank you for all you do, your staff, appreciate y'all. Thank you very much. Before we go any further, I'm delighted to introduce two of our staff members that are with us tonight. I'll try to get their names correct. Assistant Superintendent is Mr. Kirk King, and Mr. McCann's Executive Secretary, or not Mr. McCann, this is McCann, Susan, yeah, I'm having a right mind. Mr. McKibb, Executive Secretary, I'm looking at her, and she's getting red now, you know. She thinks I embarrassed her on purpose, but I don't, I'm just embarrassed myself. But, they are with us tonight, appreciate them coming here. Okay, so now, let's go to the LSIC meeting for Lincoln County High School, Mr. Mathis.
Yes, sir. Go ahead, Warren.
Oh, I'm just gonna pass out, hey.
Okay, you go ahead. Who speaks first?
Brody.
Yes, okay, Brody, you know, please.
Like always, he wrangles some kids and do it for us so we can do it.
Please introduce yourselves, it's, it's, just hope you don't know who you are, okay?
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to Lincoln County High School, home of the Panthers. I am Brody Pinson, a sophomore at Lincoln County High School, and I'm also a member of the newly adopted student lead team. Uh, hi, I'm Aelyn Sadler, and I'm a senior here at LCHS, and I'm also part of the lead team here.
Let Mr. McCormick pass out some of that literature here.
I'm all in the way here. You just gotta ignore me, I'm not here, cause I'm passing out tons and tons of paper work.
It's been about three class periods today, trying to hammer this in my head, so hopefully we'll be all right. Honesty is always the best policy for you.
Wasn't too bad. He's exaggerating, I only waterboarded him once.
Uh, you sure about that?
Okay, twice.
Sure about that, that number, right?
When do you have orders? Oh, it's hundred, it's hundred. Did they just look like I'm being bugged? Thanks, we'll go. Sorry, get the screen, cause it's lazy.
Once again, good evening, everyone, and welcome to Lincoln County High School, and this is our twenty eighteen, twenty twenty LSIC presentation.
So the first thing we want to talk about tonight is student achievement. So the best way to measure student achievement is through numbers and data, so let's go to that first.
First, we have our assessment data from the twenty eighteen, nineteen school year. This is comparing all districts and all schools in West Virginia versus Lincoln County High School. And you can see we've got, got quite a bit to improve on, but if we're going to compare Lincoln County High School, let's compare apples to apples.
So the data here may look a little confusing and stuff, and that's why I'm handing over the mic, so I don't mess it up.
That's okay. Uh, so we're comparing, uh, last year's data to the previous year's data. And when looking at the numbers, if you're in the blue or the green, all right, uh, up is good, down is bad. But if you're looking at yellow and red, which is, does not meet standard, or partially meets standards, if those numbers go down, it's good. If they go up, it's bad. Uh, and if you look at the percentage points that we went up and down from this, from last year to the year before. First, it seems a little daunting, but we're about half and half for every, for, in the first one, for mathematics, where we went, uh, up eight in partially understood. Uh, over in, uh, when it comes to reading, uh, we went up eight in meets mastery. So the numbers kind of even out a little bit, um, where we went up in some subject areas and went down in others. Um, but overall, it kind of panned out across the board, uh, but we still have a lot of room for improvement. And our next slide is going to talk about, uh, what we're going to do to tackle these issues.
Okay, so some of the ways we're going to tackle these issues, um, first with our math, um, we're going to, we're going to offer AMP math classes to our ninth and eleventh grade students. These are for those bubble kids who are either just a little bit above mastery or just a bit short of mastery, so that way they can, they, on the next test, they could easily drop or improve. So we can teach that, that AMP curriculum to them to allow them to be able to get mastery.
And we're also going to continue math tutoring during our AAs.
And last year, our SAT did not provide the adequate data, so we have a PSAT scheduled in, for a few weeks, in a few weeks, and I'll turn it over to Mr. Matthews so he can.
Yeah, what I was talking about with the data from last year's assessment, there were two test dates. And we didn't, we were not aware of this, but the one test date that we, uh, we were wanting and should have had was during our spring break. So there were two assessments given, why the state would do this, I have no idea. But there's one SAT set of data that you get that gives you line item analysis. In other words, it tells you each and every question on the SAT within every subject area, how many students were correct, how many were incorrect. And you can break those questions down and come to the root cause of the situ, the problem that caused them to miss those questions. The assessment that we gave here at Lincoln County High School last year gave us no data. Um, it, it gives us the trailing indicator data, which basically means we have eleven proficient in math, eleven percent proficient in math, we had forty-four proficient in English Language Arts, and we had twenty-three proficient in science. So while we're looking at the PSAT now, we're going to get all ninth, tenth, and eleventh grader students on the October sixteenth date, they're going to be taking the PSAT. That's going to give us data that we can then guide instruction and change instruction to meet the needs that our students have identified they have. So when we give that assessment on the sixteenth of, of this month, it's going to give us a lot of important data that we can actually use. But the test we had from last year, it gave us none. It just simply told us where we were as far as number proficient, number not proficient, and so forth. So every single ninth, tenth, eleventh grade student is going to be taking the PSAT on October the sixteenth, at least that's our goal, that's our goal. Quite a daunting task, uh, because it, it literally will, it will be a full, full throttle day of, of testing.
And what, what, who's going to take it, what?
Ninth grade students, tenth grade students, and eleventh grade students, all of them. The only group that will not be tested on the day we are seniors. So they're all taking that assessment. Now, we was talking about the AMP class, the AMP class is actually an extra math class that's in addition to the regularly scheduled math class. And the AMP class works on those skills that we will be identifying and we have identified through assessment that our students need. So we're changing our instruction to meet the needs of our students. And, uh, we've already secured, uh, through Mr. King, we've already secured the help from a, a math teacher that I've used in every school I've been to bring math improvement. Her name is Jill Ziegler. She's already made one visit and she's coming later this week for her second visit. She was going to come last week, but we postponed because of the situations we had last week. So she's coming later this week to meet with our math teachers and to meet with me and to help devise a deeper plan within the area of math. So we're working towards it, we're working towards it. And I'm, I'm thankful that we're looking at eleven percent proficient in math, cause a few years ago, we had three. And I, I would rather have eleven than I have three.
At least you're in double digits.
Yes, at least we're in double digits. And that year, with the changes we made, we went from three percent to twenty-seven percent in one year. So we had twenty-four percent growth in one year in math. So hopefully, we're going to see the same types of results this year. At least that's our goal, maybe even higher.
Okay, well, um, another program that we have here that just started today, actually, is after school tutoring. Yep?
And this year, we, uh, debuted the lead teams, which is a, a high school extension of the Leader in Me program that's currently incorporated in the middle school. And I will let Ms. Polly Smith give us a little bit more info.
Okay, I'll take just a few moments to share a few important components of the lead program, uh, here at LCHS. Uh, first of all, I would like to begin with our trip to Heath High School in Heath, Ohio. Uh, last May, a few teachers and students, as well as Michael McCormick and Jessica Frye and Kirk King and Amy Shirley, and I went to visit Heath, Ohio. And it was a very pleasant day, we enjoyed ourselves very much, and, and we were there to learn about the high school implementation of Leader in Me, which is known as LEED. And that day, we learned a great deal about their successes, their implementation, as well as some of their failures. They were very transparent on what worked and what didn't work. And so it gave us a little bit of ideas about what our implementation would look like here at LCHS this year. Uh, upon our return, we selected a lead staff team and a student staff team, or a student team. And at the end of that year, we completed, um, a one-day training, and that was like the first part of June, right before school was out. And, um, we trained our staff and we trained our students, and we learned just a little bit enough really just to get us started. And we still felt like we needed more. And so for our academy, uh, before school started, we met again and we had a two-day training. And during that training, we did the seven habits of highly effective people and highly successful people. And which was good and which was well received by our faculty. On September the tenth, uh, we completed another day of training for, once again, our staff lead team and student lead team. And during that training, we attempted to create a plan for the school year. And I'll be honest, when we sat down together that morning, she looked at us and said, what do you plan or what do you want to achieve from this training? And what I wanted was a clear cut, this is what's going to happen throughout the school year, and this is what's going to happen. Well, that didn't happen. You know, we did our training and we once again had all of these great ideas, because students were very eager to come up with some suggestions. Staff members were eager as well, but we still didn't have a clear cut focus on what we were doing and exactly how it would look this year. So then the staff lead team, we met again, and we talked again about, you know, what could we really do? And we tried to focus our student lead team, and so we took all of their suggestions and we kind of listed them. And then we ranked as a staff lead team, what we felt would be most important for our school. And we wanted to be able to do things really well. We didn't want to do fifteen things average. We wanted to pick a few things that we felt like we could accomplish and would be good and we would have success. And so that's what we did, we kind of focused them in, I met them with the, uh, student lead team. And I said, okay, based on what we came up with, look at these and I want you guys to choose your six to nine activities that we can really do well. And that's what they did, and so that's going to be our focus. So what now we do have a focus on the things that we hope to achieve this school year. I will say also that we decided as, um, as a school, that we would use the seven habits of highly effective teens as our curriculum. Um, the program is set up that there's a book for ninth grade, tenth grade, eleventh grade, and twelfth grade. And, uh, the ninth grade book is the, is the one that we've chosen to use with all of our students because our eleventh and twelfth graders haven't been exposed to Leader in Me, just those ninth and tenth graders have. And so we decided to choose that one book this year to go with all of our students throughout the school year. And then hopefully, next year, we can go and split off and have a ninth grade book, tenth grade book, eleventh and twelfth. Uh, I will point out that the plan, um, you know, as we, as we think about the school year, we are going to have our lead groups with students on the second and fourth Wednesdays, so we'll meet twice a month. Um, and we're also embracing that the leader in me paradigm, everyone can be a leader, change starts with me, that includes me. Uh, everyone has genius educators empower students to leader in learning and to develop the whole person. Um, we are going to focus this school year on four main areas of leadership, uh, media, community service, school beautification, and leadership events. So those are our four main areas, um, for this school year. I will say, uh, as I conclude here, that, um, I have implored our staff and student lead team and our faculty as a whole to remain positive in this new adventure. We know that there's going to be pushback from staff members, it's quite another program, when in fact, LEED is not supposed to be a program, it's supposed to be a process. And so I'm really pushing positivity, I'm really, I'm pushing, I'm pushing for students to buy in, staff members to buy in, and, and to avoid all negativity. Um, I truly believe that, that we make a difference in the lives of our students, I really believe that as educators. And I think that each day, you know, as we're here at Lincoln County High School, that we're making this a better place for the youth of our county. And I'm super proud of that. It's our belief that LEED will provide us with the opportunities to encourage student growth, student leadership, student accountability, and student service.
All right, and, um, here we have innovative school programs, it's another one of the great things that's happening in our school. We have a lot of great things happening here, and it, it'd be a shame not to recognize them as much as we have going on here at Lincoln County High School.
So first things first, we have dual credit and AP classes now. The dual credit classes, uh, you can get high school credit and college credit, which down the line saves you a ton of money. I'm taking one right now, I actually take the two right now. And they're going through Marshall University, and then once I get to college, I can transfer those credits wherever I want to go. AP courses, uh, they're almost the same, only difference is you take a test at the end of the year, and then those test scores, if they're high enough, you can get college credit. The one thing about these classes, though, you have to have like adequate or adequate test scores to get into them. You have to have the test scores to get into them, and if you don't, that just leaves you out of luck. They are really great programs here, and, uh, I know a lot of students take advantage of them because they're great.
All right, and another thing about student engagement is one of our English teachers, Ms. Lori Brothers, um, does a thing called student missions, where the students are given, um, the students are given a mission where they have to go out and find a staff member that they may not get to see or talk to every day. And they have to take a selfie with that staff member and bring it back to the teacher, and they can get extra credit for that.
Yeah, we've all had our turn.
For me, I think it's, it's a really great way for the kids to get to understand what resources are available in the building. They might not typically know a year.
Uh, another student engagement program here is the students in the PACE lab have designed this postcard and have colored them, and they're going to send these postcards to fifty states across America in hopes to, in hopes that we can exchange like postcards from those states.
Um, as for, uh, we communicate through social media on, uh, multiple platforms. In the past year, we've had a lot of improvement on all three platforms. On Twitter, we had an increase of over a hundred followers. On Instagram, we had an increase of over two hundred followers. And on Facebook, we had an almost, or over eight hundred, almost nine hundred increase, in followers increased in the past year. As for our CTE and simulated workplace, that, they got a lot of stuff going on down there, and it's a great program. Mr. Miller, that's all, got it going on down there, going good. Just to hit some of the high points, uh, a group of students over the summer, they were asked to go to the SREV conference, national conference in Baltimore, Maryland. Uh, in two major, um, CTE organizations, we have, uh, the state president in HOZA, which is the medical aspect. Christian Perry is the state president. And, uh, SCUSA, Ms. Bailey Baker is our president of the state. Uh, our vex robotics team, adopted and all girls team, our Makerspace is now open, nice cool three D printers and laser engravers, lots of fun down there. CNC plasma counters and milling machines, uh, you got some of the examples there, and, uh, we got the Livingston NIT grant, which was over the summer when they went to NIT. Uh, we got a few entrepreneur partnerships with EntraEd and, uh, let me see, yeah, EntraEd and the, uh, Sandwatch Academy. I'm looking for it there. And that, they have a documentary on, it's on Facebook?
It's on YouTube right now, they did a premiere at the Taste Valley Movie Theater, they had a premiere night here last year. Uh, and in fact, the, the one that they did in the Taste Valley Movie Theater, uh, they had, uh, the, the host from the WTCZ come and do a Q and A session and all kinds of different stuff.
And we think it's a wonderful, another one, coming up, the, uh, we have Parker back with Sandwatch and the work with our kids on some, on their skill. Uh, we have two, um, groups of students that have, um, really good ideas. Right now, we're trying to get those to some folks that have some money, so we can be able to take these ideas to make them reality. So we'll work on that. Yeah, I'll start then.
And, uh, Brody was probably a little bit light on it, I don't know if you noticed all the, the things that are sitting across the front of your table. Feel free to pick those up and play with them, do whatever, a lot of these are projects and stuff that have come out with a lot of the three D printing that we have down at the Makerspace.
Yeah.
Uh, we've got three D printing, there's, uh, I think there's. There's, I think there's a disc in front of each of you that was like laser engraved with our Panther logo. And then, the plasma cutter, which is up and running. We've had it running for years. They even got a partnership with, like, the local flower shop to make all kinds of different metal objects where they can be cut out, ground down, painted. And we're expecting to do that this year in our woodshop with the building construction group because they have a similar machine, but doesn't, they do wood milling. That machine is put together. We're just waiting on a few extra parts right now for them to finish it together so they can start creating a lot of really cool wood sculptures.
We also have the Busy Bean and the Growl and Grill, which give another big thank you to them for supplying our nice talking mill that I know everyone was talking good about. Got AP Computer Science with the Code.org curriculum. Building Construction doing projects at Beach Fork. They did a lot of roofing and stuff, right Mr. Miller? Got FFA National Award winners. New Aerospace and Aeronautics Program. That sounds so fun. Fifty-seven thousand dollars just this year so far in modernization grants for the school year. And we are now a West Virginia Simulated Workplace Training Site where people from all over the state get to come and learn about simulated workplace here at Lain County High School. That's really exciting. And for simulated workplace, they create companies within the classroom. And these are the companies that they've created. Skills USA, this is an organization that includes most of our programs. We had quite a bit of gold medalists on the state level. And in the national competition, we had some really high national plays. As for Chromsey Investigation and Entrepreneurship, we had fifth-place national winners. I mean, there's a possibility that there could have been fifty states that are competing, and we were in the top five. And they all received a skill point, which they can put on their college resume. Chapter Business placed eighth. And Middle School Urban Search and Rescue placed fifth, which is middle school kids who come here and work on their robots, which they also compete on the Vex Robotics Team during the winter and spring.
Okay, and one of the biggest and growing CTE programs here is our FFA. Like I already said, that they are national gold winners. If you look up here, you can see a few of the things they've done. A few, a lot of the things they've done. State Placing Teams, Tractor Operation Maintenance, Food Science. They just have, they do a lot of things. They're a really great program. And also, like, my work is not up here, but they make some great apple butter. It's not all here, it's on a bullet.
It's not a bullet.
I'm for you, Seth. I'm like, I've got jars in this stuff.
And just to jump in, we, with our AG program, we turned down about, I don't know, fifty or sixty students. We used to have any room for them. Mister Dale's pretty much had to be at every class period. And it's one of our great programs. And hopefully, we might be able to eventually maybe expand that and possibly look at another staff member in the AG program so we can handle some of the overflows. If you want in, and then, if you want, it's a tough thing to have.
And I'll, I'll add this.
Speaking of the apple butter, this Friday, the Grill is gonna be making homemade fried apple butter pies. And I've already tested two. Three, it may be three.
I always miss these testing times.
Oh, I didn't. I really like the smell.
So, another great, great program here is our LCHS Food and Clothing Pantry. Now, it's run by the lovely Carrie Smith, who's back there hiding. So, first off, the food pantry. I know a lot of families, especially when the holidays go there. But also, throughout the year, students will go there on a Friday, get food for the weekends. They have food for the weekend. There's also clothing pantry for students that maybe don't have clothes. They can just go to Carrie Smith and she'll hook them up, and they'll be good and set to go. Also, there are three grants coming our way. One is the Community End Grant, or Community End Schools Grant. Basically, it should allow us to bring in another social worker to help work in the county and support our students and their families. Another one is Family Engagement Program. It'll provide LCHS with First County Contact, previously known as the Parent Educator in the history of school. County Contact will coordinate the community volunteers to continue programs here at LCHS. And then, finally, the Grant Families Program Grant. It's here, it's to educate grandparents that are now raising kids that are, whose parents were affected by the COVID crisis, just to put it in some way. So, those are the three grants coming our way.
Oh, now it's Jessica's turn.
Okay. I'm not the last one, but I'm.
No, you're not the last one.
Okay, I'm not, I'm the first.
That's me.
Good. Just a quick update. I think the last time we met, we had actually just administered the ACE questionnaire to our students at the high school. And at that point, we had discovered that basically, as far as, at first, childhood experiences were concerned, we're about three times the national average. And that's pretty much county-wide with just some small sampling through elementary schools that we did have about, oh, seven hundred and some surveys completed here at the high school. So, we knew we had a lot to tackle. And we've been at this for several years in this county, in Le Montrone, how we talk about it, how we discuss it, how people react to it. And, you know, when you throw the name out there and, "That's not me. That's somebody else, you know, I do this, I do that." And I can honestly say, as stressful as last week was for us as a school, it was the easiest week that I've had. And I've been through several of these in this county as far as, you know, we got to come in and just do our job and do what was right for the kids and what helped kids. And we didn't have to worry about bureaucracy and red tape and paperwork. It was actually a well-oiled machine. And I don't know that, I wanna say that that's because we've done it several times. That's not it. I think we finally just come to terms with the fact that these are the parts that were dealt and these are our kids. And our main jobs today are them. And that's what we're here for. Through all of last week, that's what I did. I mean, I talked to teachers, but it wasn't teachers calling me saying, "I need your help because I feel like I'm out of my element." These teachers handled it like pros, and I'm glad. We finally got there to where they feel like, you know, they can be a mom, they can be a dad, they can be a sister, a brother, a teacher, a friend, whatever, but they're not afraid of doing something. But some of the activities that we completed, and everybody kind of always tenses up when I say this. We handled it very tactfully, but it's always a good eye-opening experience. We did this probably four years ago, about when we started our trauma initiative. And basically, what we did was we take our entire staff and we list their names on chart paper, angle on the walls, and we bring a group of kids in and we hand them a dot. So, we say, "Any staff member on that wall that you feel like you could talk to, that you have a relationship with, that is somebody you could go to if you were in trouble, you needed help, you put a dot." You can put seventy-five dots up there, seventy-five dots. You dot their names. And we did that about four years ago. And, you know, just kind of did, this was our averages and this and that. And Dana had the information then, talked to teachers about how many dots they had. And, you know, with their evaluation, it wasn't used as any type of evaluation tool for instance, just, "This is the type of relationships that you're building with students." And we know with anything out there, relationship is the main key. If we're not successful, we've got our relationships with these kids. So, starting with that, last year, we decided to do the dot activity again. So, the first time we did it, our dot ranged anywhere from a teacher only getting four dots to a hundred and ninety-one dots. And that's one teacher that had a hundred and ninety-one kids that put a dot by their name. But this last time we did it, we still had the four dots, but we had a teacher that had two hundred and forty-four dots. So, we actually had a pretty good increase from our averages, about a five percent increase from the first time that we did it, the last time. Now, when we do this, it is unannounced. The teachers do not know that we're doing it. I actually tell very few people because we don't want any campaigning going on out there or anything like that, you know, you can do a dot, you know, you like it, whatever. And, you know, have our massive little method to, you know, color coding things by grades. So, you pull the ninth grade down and you put the tenth grade stickers up so you can know. Because we have teachers that just seek twelfth grade. So, for them, thrusting and think that they're going to have this great long-term relationship with this incoming freshman is unrealistic. But we want to make sure that they have good relationships with their seniors that they're meeting with. So, that was kind of the thing that happened then. So, then I thought, well, we've done this to the teachers and we tortured their poor souls and they're tired of talking about trauma and relationships and all this. But I have to show it to them another way. So, in a very daunting task, Mike and I and a couple other people listed the name, wanted the index card of every student in this building across these windows. And we did it on a faculty center day. And we brought our teachers in. And we said, "If you can tell us five personal things about the child who pulled her name off." Not, "Oh, well, they failed my English test," or "They didn't do good on my math assignment." Five personal things, you know, "They have a dog named Bentley," or, you know, "They live with their grandparents." Something personal. Tougher than you think it would be. Even kids that I feel like I have some pretty good relationships with that I'm sitting here thinking, "Okay, I'm gonna point to three or four." To get to five, you know, and some of those names were flying off there like heaven. And we stood back here, it's probably the sickest days I've ever had at school because you're spraying, like, "Please, pull names, pull names, pull names." And the coolest thing was the teachers got to see that and watch those names fall off because these windows were full. And you start to see holes, but then you can start to see names. So, people would go back through just to make sure that they hadn't missed anybody. Like, there's, you know, there's a couple names left up there. And what we realized was a blessing and a curse at the same time. And it's all goes back to your perspective, which is what we live in. Last half of, last afternoon, there was an average of ten percent. There were about eighty-five kids in the entire building. So, we were looking at our home and at about eight fifty at that time last year that nobody could really name five things about. So, when you're looking at eight hundred and fifty, you say, "But look, we know ninety percent of our kids really well." So, that's a great thing. And ten percent is not, you know, is not perfect. But that's not too bad because there are kids that don't want a good childhood teacher. And they, you know, they're just not that type of kid, and that's okay. But we had our target list at that point. And teachers really made a point to say, like, you know, "I saw this kid." You know, make sure to say hi or tell them good morning and those types of things. And we'll do it again. It'll come up, you know, unannounced again, but we'll do it again. And I think sometimes when we get the educational buzzwords such as trauma and those types of things. I was the first, I guess, you know, I've spent all these years in college and I'm doing these trainings, and then it just hit me. You know, the biggest thing we could do is have a relationship with our kids. And any type of research even that you look at that goes back to that, it's that caring adult. It's that person that believes in them and that type of thing. So, I honestly believe that we're making progress. And I thought we were going nowhere very quickly at times. But after this past week and after last year, when, you know, teachers would make a point to say, "Good morning," in the hallway or pat you on the back or do just small things like that. Sometimes we have to get out of our professional mindset and just realize that we're human beings. And it's okay to be a human being, even though we're in the school system. And I think we like to give each other permission to do that. Like, you know, it's okay to cry. It's okay to have a bad time. It's okay to be in a bad mood. Kids need to know that adults are the same way. They're no different, even though they were struggling with many, many things that I couldn't even imagine dealing with as an adult, more or less as a sixteen-year-old. But I do think we're making some headway. Maybe not in the traditional sense, but we are making our point clear. And I think that teachers are truly, truly now making an effort because they are seeing that kids perform for you when you make something to them and when you make that effort. And on a very side note, we have done our Aaron's Ball training with all of our staff. And we're all working on our first lesson. So, we're hoping to roll out in November to our students. So, that's where we are.
Oh, and now it's my turn.
Okay. Well, I'm probably not.
Can I add? So, I get to present the Pacific Needs, which this list really hasn't changed a whole lot from last year. But I did bring some new things with me. I have, I know you guys probably get sick and tired of hearing me talk about cameras and cameras and cameras. But it keeps coming up as cameras being one of our main issues in this building. In front of you guys have a map of the school. And I know it's a little hard to see because it was printed a little small. But on that map, there are little red dots. And for every one of those little red dots is a camera in a hallway, not in the classrooms, but just in the hallways. And we're also in the main parts, like in the gym and a few other places. And there's a little arrow beside of that pointing in which direction it faces. For the majority of our cameras in this building, they face exits. Because I think when the mentality was when this building was built, a lot of, you know, this was post-combine and all those things. A lot of the threat that people were expecting from the buildings were coming from outside the building. And so, a lot of the cameras we have face exits. Face exit doors, somewhere in that nature. But a lot of the issues that we have in this building and that are continuing to be issues are things that happen within the halls. So, if you're looking at that map, you'll notice that there are big gaps in the English hallway where there are no cameras. Because for each one of the dots you see, with the exception of there are two 360 cameras right out here in the hallway by the elevator bank and just a little bit further on down the hallway, those are the only two 360 cameras we have, which are on the new system. If you look at the printouts I gave you, there's the top picture, which is the black picture, is the 360 picture. That has exceptional clarity. They're not great at the edges of the room. But if you look at those pictures compared to the other two pictures, even the one in the hallway out here by the main entrance, there are tons of people out there standing, but you cannot make out a single face. I can tell by body posture that the two of those people are Jamie Jones and Ms. Joyce. But other than that, I couldn't tell you who any of the kids are by looking at their faces. The 360 cameras, on the other hand, they have a much broader depth of view so you can see a lot more detail in those rooms. You can literally look at the keys on the keyboard. And that's in its condensed view. You can actually blow that up larger on your screen and get even better detail. Last year, I was able to, there was a kid throwing eraser at the teacher. You know, just like had little wads of eraser they were throwing. I could literally pick out the little pink things in his fingertips as he's throwing them on the 360 camera. The regular cameras only have about a throw range of about twenty feet where you can see clearly. Ideally, I should be able to track a kid from the time he walks in the front door, anywhere in the building until he gets to a classroom. We had an issue a couple weeks ago where a kid came in and said he lost his code. He thought that someone stole it from him. And we tracked him down in the gym. And we couldn't find it in the gym because the gym cameras are way up in the ceiling. And there's four of them. They point in all four different directions. In the auxiliary gym, there's only two cameras. One facing the stairwell, one facing the entrance. He was in the auxiliary gym. We couldn't, I couldn't even see him. I could tell because he was wearing a bright green shirt. It was the only reason I could tell that was him. Had to go to some of the better cameras out in the hallways that were right over top of the doorway before I could track him going in and out of the hallway. It took Sean and I probably two hours to go through different footage to try and track down this kid's whereabouts throughout the day to find out, even come to the part where we realized that when I even walked with him through his schedule and asking his teachers, "Did he leave his code in here?" To come to find out that we finally found a camera of him coming in in the morning and he didn't even have his code with him. He probably left it on the bus. But it took us two hours to do that because we couldn't track him through the cameras like we should be able to. Because you can't see his face. Luckily, he was wearing a bright thing. We had an incident yesterday where a kid threw a tent- We had an incident yesterday where a kid threw a tennis ball at a teacher. Goofing off, doing something stupid, just chucked the tennis ball down the hallway. Happened right under a camera. Couldn't tell because we have several cameras that are dead, but under that particular camera, it just wasn't facing the right way, couldn't see anything. So when it comes to finding out who threw the ball, I had no clue. The kid was kind of blurred into the crowd. Um, so what we would really like to see is, is one of our biggest facility needs here is a unified camera system. Right now there are three, that's why I have three different screenshots, because there are three different types of cameras and three different recording DVR recording devices. I can access some of the 360 cameras from my office, uh, same in the principal's office and things. But for a lot of the cameras, you have to come down here to the server room and actually physically get on the server. And that requires having Sean and access to that room. And it is very difficult to try and pin down those kinds of things, especially if he's like the HVAC, he's on the roof somewhere. You know, and then it comes down to prioritizing, is this important? You know, was it a fight? Was it somebody missing something? So, yeah, a unified camera system is, is very big. Because those 360 cameras are good, but there are several different systems that will integrate all of them a little bit better. We need to take down a lot of cameras, have them cleaned, put back up, uh, possibly newer cameras. Because again, the, the vision on those is about 20 feet from the camera, is about all you can see clearly and that's about it. Uh, we have, like I said, there are a lot of blind spots in the hallway. If you look in the CTE hallway, uh, in the back area where the bays are, there are two cameras in that hallway and they both face doorways. Outside doorways on either side. So if anything happens down that long hallway that goes to the CTE bays or in the hallway where the CTE bays are, we won't be, we don't, we can't see anything because there are zero cameras there. Um, we have some in the CTE bays and their classrooms or their shops and computers and things, but that's in the classrooms themselves. Not so much in the big bays. So again, more 360 cameras, getting our old ones replaced, updated, that would be awesome. Um, the, along with safety and security for the building, we're looking at doing a secure entrance. Sort of like what they have at parks where you walk in, you're kind of locked in that glass enclosure before you get run in. Because as of right now, we've, I've been in the front here as parents come in, walk straight past the office and look around like, where's the office? And so we have parents that can come into the building, walk around, not check into the office, not get a, a visitor's pass. They're just signed in. You know, a lot of times we have parents that bring kids food at lunchtime and other things. And, and sometimes that's okay, but you don't want parents bringing in food and giving it to all the different kids. You know, we have all these worries about allergies and this, that and the other, who's allergic to the blood? It can be an issue. So, uh, our teachers have asked about barricades for the classrooms in case of, we've had our active shooter training. Something that maybe hooks over the enclosures or the openings of the doors, something that would help them. Maybe an extra bolt lock or something that slides under the door that prevents people from kicking their doors in. There are a million different options for those. Uh, another big one is the guard shack down by the bridge. Um, because this is a closed campus, we do have a lot of issues with people just driving in, driving off. Uh, middle of the day, strange vehicles just circling the building, not really realizing, so they're not checking in at a guard shack, they're not checking out. Kids leaving, just, you know, skipping class, go get lunch, come back, you know, that kind of thing. Um, and, and that's pretty much it for the security part of what we were talking about. And our last facility need, uh, that I'm going to mention is we want to get an update on the football field. Um, we know there's goalposts out there, there's still a big fence out there. What are the next steps? What's happening with that? Uh, do we have a timeline for getting, uh, locker rooms, uh, concession stands, things of that nature, bleachers, uh, put in? Um, has the, the field like settled where it is now? Um, because I know that some of the, there have been requests to use the field already, but we've just been denying a lot of different things because we don't know what the condition of the field is. And then we had to wait for so many years for the grass to seed and how, you know, how is it going to seed? Did the, the crown dip? You know, do they need to add more dirt to it? I don't know. There's a lot of questions we have and we would just like to maybe get an update from you guys about what's going on over there. Mr. Mathis?
Is that our cue to try to answer that?
Possibly, and then we're up for questions from you guys, so.
Well, about the football field, this is something we two, uh, talk about. Do you come to this? Uh, and we talk about it frequently. Uh, of course, the biggest obstacle with the football field and whatever else might occur out there is money. You know, the, the initial cost that we had when we first got into this, because you know the state lost the paper to the school, but no athletic facility. So, uh, but, you know, we were having firms come into us and talk in terms of four million, five million, six million dollars from wherever they were. I think we had $200,000 and county commission gave us a hundred and we matched it. Um, so that's why after a couple of years, we came to the conclusion, if we're ever going to do anything, we're going to have to do this in incremental steps. And that's when we took the first step and that was, uh, trying to get the field to a degree of, uh, what a, the field would look like. Uh, we don't feel like, what we would like to do is every time we take one of the stages, that'd be a permanent stage. That we're going to do something that's going to be there later on and then we could be able to find that. So, and then even that one became a tough one because when Dana Smith was our maintenance director and he, we get the bids in and he was down there, you know, thinking, you know, if we're going to get these bids in, we're going to get this field finally, we're going to get the field leveled. And I knew there was a lot of hillside and all that had to be hauled off and this, that and the other. We're going to get that done, we're going to have drains put in here, I'm going to, that, that we care of. Then the first bid came in, what, $400,000 or, you know, like nowhere near what, you know, we had available. So forget that. So we, uh, we kept going down that path until a couple of years ago, we finally, uh, were able to get what we have now, where we got a bid that was reasonable, uh, that we got drainage in the field and we got the field, uh, the level that it should be. Uh, and, you know, so there we, once again, our goal was to have things that, we've got that in place. Now let's just build them by putting the other things that are necessary to have the field. And we've kind of been stagnated. Now as far as utilization of the building or the field itself, we had a moratorium on that because, uh, of the, uh, firm that did that. And we also had, uh, Mr. Gosney, our maintenance director now, had a firm that comes in and they, you know, sow the grass and fertilize it, this, that and the other. And they would confer with him on when we should be able to do it. And, and each time we'd say, no, it's not time yet, we're going to have to fertilize it again this year. So finally, we're at the point now where, and I think this may give us shared with Mr. Mathis, the field is usable. You know, I don't think this lack of rain forever has helped us any, but, you know, as from our, our perspective, we don't have a, a moratorium on utilizing the field any longer. Uh, uh, this field is just like any other facility, uh, uh, any of our schools. You go to the school principal, you request use of the building, the facility, and that's where we are here, they go to Mr. Mathis. So it is permissible to use. Um, the field itself should be at the proper level and all these type things. Drainage should be, uh, if it's there, it should be operable. So that part of it's done. Uh, we fenced it in because unfortunately we had some people that wanted to drive over there or in a park over there and all. So after numerous attempts, we decided, well, we'll do something to stop that. We'll put the fences there, which once again, we'll be using in the end anyway. So we're not doing something that we don't need to have to have. Uh, now as far as where, what are we going to do next? Um, we have thought about this here recently, and I'd say very recently, as to, because some of the board members have expressed this, to try and, and use some of the, um, skill that we have here at the school to help us to do what we need to do. And what we were hoping to do is maybe start with locker rooms. That's the big hindrance, the immediate one, is, is locker rooms. Because, uh, aside from, I know the band has expressed an interest in using the field and, you know, for them, that can be that big of a deal. But also the middle school football team. You know, they, if you ever see where they practice, it's not good. Uh, so for them, and they don't have goal, uh, goalposts or anything, so for them to come out would be a, a good thing. But you run into that obstacle, you know, locker rooms, they dress out there, you got to come out here. And once they're here, what do they use for restrooms, drinking, all that? So what we've been kicking around here lately is that we feel like that we could provide, um, the monies for the materials to build with a locker room. We would use, uh, our architectural firm and get some, nothing elaborate, but a basic locker room scheme. We have to decide exactly where that should be with our maintenance director. That's based upon where water, sewer and all those things are. And then we'd have to, you know, look at that. But once again, our goal being, whatever we do there, is we want to be there on, from now on. So we want to do it right and take, that would be our next step. And then once again, utilizing, utilizing the traits that are available here in the CTE program. Uh, like Mr. Miller, uh, Mr. Curry probably may have talked to you about that. And, uh, you thought that was a doable thing, which would allow your students to begin to, uh, do what they're going to be doing hopefully for their livelihood and at the same time benefit all of us. So that's our, what we want, we'd like to see done next. Would that be done overnight? No, it's not going to be, no, it's done overnight. But that's what we feel that from a financial aspect that we, you know, we really don't have any, uh, other alternatives. But we think if we can begin to get that done, then we could just build off it. Because the other things are, they just get to be where there, you know, like lights, you know, what it took first to get lights out here at the baseball and softball fields and all that. And this would be even more expensive. But, uh, you know, if we can get the, the locker rooms and we can have those available and then begin to, you know, utilize it for maybe even for some youth activities that could take place there too. Because, but if you don't have restrooms or facilities for, you know, spectators or, you know, the parents like Mr. Smith used to be hanging over the fence, he and one of his friends, watching their kids play, they, you know, they can't do anything. And, uh, so that's kind of what, what we are going to try to do, uh, you know, as our next step here. Uh, we're always open to ideas. If anybody has any, uh, you know, benefactors out there that could help us to do some of the other things, we're open to that. But the field is now usable based upon Mr. Mathis approving the use of it. And, uh, you know, we hope to, you take that next step from there on. But that's about all I know on football fields. We don't, nobody would like to see that any more than we would, in a group here. We go to other schools and we see what they have, um, we're envious and we, we'd like to have that too.
And the deeper cameras, we all know and understand how important it is. We talked about it in February, Monday morning, uh, I don't know, the bank here early. On the curse, I shared this with you, we're not, we're going to act as some grant funding. But I, I'm not sure how much money is involved in those grants, but Angie and I would say that would be enough money to cover our roots of our campuses.
I did have one question that we, that we, now, uh, the, the existing cameras now, if you go in, you call it the, uh, the unified system. Now, would the ones that you have now be able to be adapted to be a part of that or are you replacing those?
Some yes, some no. A lot of the, the cameras that are, I have a separate map for like the exterior cameras. And we have a pretty good coverage range of everything outside. A few dead spots here and there, but the range on those cameras, because all the cameras are attached to the exterior of the building. Um, with the exception, I think maybe one might be out on a pole somewhere else, I think, out on one of the light poles. But all of the cameras are like right on the building. Um, and seeing things that happen in the parking lot, not very feasible. We had another incident last year where somebody had keyed someone's car out here. Yes, we could see it, but again, tracking the person in and out of the building was kind of impossible with where the cameras are. We couldn't tell what they were wearing when they got out there. You could see it, you could see it happening, but you just couldn't tell who it was or what it was.
You can't identify the?
Yeah, can't identify the person, um, not even by what they were wearing. Because it was, one of those incidents happened, I think it was either early in the morning as everyone was coming in or, or it was noticed also right in the evening as everyone was going out, so, uh, it's.
Have we had anyone come in and look and see what needs to be done?
Well, Sean has looked into several different systems and like I say, unified system is basically a, a, a software program that can identify these IP cameras because they're all internet-based cameras. They're all local Wi-Fi or they're on, uh, POE switches which have hardwired connections run to them. So it's all based off the internet here in the building. So they run all of our, our network. Um, and what he's looking at is a couple of different systems and they're, they are kind of expensive to where you have DVR systems that can record all of them. And we, we always have issues every time there's a power out, there's something else going on. We have to come in here and sometimes things are really busy with getting the HVAC back on. We had that issue where we were out for heat one day. And if we have issues on days like that where we need to check the cameras, sometimes we're SOL because it's, there's no going in there and pulling the cameras because they went down when the power went out and they didn't come back up. Um, the new systems will be on the, the battery backup and they're all recorded in one central DVR. So it's not like one system goes out, this one goes out, um, like we have now. We can remote in, start them manually, you know, they can be set on a timer, automatically kick back on if the power goes out every so often. Um, so Sean's looking into that, um, but it, again, it's, it, a lot of it is where we have like 10 and 12 girl cameras in this building that have, like even with the, the screenshots you have in front of you, like the one that's facing the bathrooms, that looks nice and clear. But there are no people in that picture and you can't really, and if you look closely at the water fountains, can anybody tell me what side the water fountain's big at on? It's, it's impossible to tell. I mean, is it on the right side, is it on the left side? Those are very pixelated pictures and it's very difficult to see even someone's face on that one. And even at the bathrooms right there, they're just facing the bathrooms where we probably need something like a 360 camera where you can see them coming down the hall and going in or, you know, vice versa.
If you, I mean, are all these, uh, you know, cool rooms or places like that in hallways or, or any of the main classrooms?
We do have several in classrooms. Um, they're not marked on that map. Uh, a lot of the computer bays or computer labs, all computer labs have one in them, uh, with the exception of the new computer lab that we put in down in the fishbowl area outside of the cafeteria. But for the most part, there are 360 cameras inside of those classrooms and those are wonderful. Like in the math lab upstairs, over here in the media center lab, the lab upstairs above that. Uh, those are great. In the shop areas and the, I think, is it Mr. Jones's classroom and a handful of other classrooms? You have access to those cameras on your end, uh, in the CTE area. Those are, those are great for, uh, safety reasons. Um, but they're not in every classroom. Uh, we, we've only put them in classrooms where we've had issues, especially where there are labs and there's equipment that can be damaged. And we can track that stuff.
And I guess you're going to be required, we are going to be required to have a certain special education classroom, right?
Yeah, we're all the details.
About to get it, right? Um, you have a number that you're looking at, I mean, like a number of needed cameras and the cost of that, that you got to that party?
No, we have not. Uh, we, I was sat down with, uh, Sean today and we drew up that map, which is the 360 Mac camera. And I went through one where I think him and, him and Angie actually walked through the building one day and just looked at the cameras and want a piece of paper, draw it down, what direction they were going in, all that fun stuff. But my main concern is like, you look, like I said, the CTE hallway, there's two cameras in that hallway. There's not any cameras showing, uh, right down the hallway from the graphic line, uh, from the graphic design lab. Um, you have them at a lot of the major double doors in the different areas, but they're unidirectional. Sometimes they're in and out and the quality on those are not great, especially when it comes to recording, like the frame rate. With the 360 cameras, it's one frame or 20 frames a second maybe. So it's, it's, there's a lot more data there. Um, some of the other ones are, you get one frame a second. So it's like duh, duh, duh. Kids can make quite a bit of distance and a lot can happen in one second in the hallway. That's the difference of a punch being thrown or something being pulled out of somebody's butt bag or something along those natures. And sometimes you just can't catch that between the frames.
Would the supplier, um, would he be in or would we be taken?
It, that depends on the, whoever, who it is. Because we have people capable of doing it here in the county. Um, whether or not it's cheaper to have someone else do it is another story. Um, because a lot of times when it comes to like labor and time and time away from other projects, a lot of times, uh, I, I've seen it where it's a lot cheaper to have another company come in and do the wiring and do all this stuff. They have, um, people that can come in, like when it's electronics specialty or things like that, they have a crew of people that can come in and knock it out in a couple of days. Um, versus if we did it, it'd be like, you know, and, um, if my schedule's kind of crazy when I'm trying to get some, I'm sitting down trying to do paperwork for a day and then. to get some, I'm sitting down trying to do paperwork for a day, and then fifteen people come in and ask plenty of different things.
A lot of times, the warranty is better also.
Yes. Yes, it is. Because if it's an issue with the way that they install it, they have to come back out and fix it.
And now, so are you all, are you going to develop a number you will need and an estimate of the cost?
If that's what I need to do, we will start that tomorrow. If we need a number of cameras, and what type and stuff, I will, I will text Sean as soon as I get out here, and we will start working on that tomorrow.
I think what we would like to see is, you know, a number of you that, you know, that you'd like to have, and, you know, their location on a document, and where they're at. And then if you have an idea of the cost of them, or, of course, I know that it kind of varies depending on quotes and bids, and all this kind of thing. We have to be able to start somewhere knowing, in the ballpark of what we're talking about. But this is something we've discussed in the past for years now, about cameras in general.
Yeah, I'd like to be able to still change this slide next year.
I mean, like, this here, I mean, like, Mr. Smith and I have looked at it, you know, when you look at this, and we didn't realize until you said that, that the bottom one looks half way, you know, it's fairly clear, and then, but like you say, when you look at it real close, look at it.
Well, in the gym, like in the auxiliary gym, I see there are two cameras listed on there, but there's a third camera in there that doesn't work in the social studies hallway. There are Xs across two cameras in the main part of the hallway, because both those cameras are down and don't work. And, and like I said, the story with the kid who lost his coat in the auxiliary gym and couldn't find it, the camera on that back wall is so bad, it's just lines and stuff going across it. And Sean was really good when he took these screenshots, he goes, "Oh, I went, I went middle of the road on all of them, I didn't want anything to look too bad," and this, that, and I was like, where I was thinking, I was like, "No, show me the worst camera we have."
So this is nothing like when I watch a crime show where they...
No, no, that, that stuff, they have videos on it.
They're swinging it on his face.
No, there's no enhance button on the keyboard.
Okay.
Do you have the cameras down there, and all of them work?
Yes. Yeah. And that was an issue Greg had when he was here, like, we'd have power out, he'd have to go out there and manually physically unplug. I'd see him on that dick-tall ladder in the commons area, because you just go in there and all four of those cameras are faced out, and they lost power, they just root down there, and you just get...
They all used to do that.
There's one table, you can see every fridge right in the kitchen, and that was it.
Don't sit there.
Don't sit there.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Mathis.
Any questions for us? Yes, we have.
Okay. Anybody have anything?
Yes.
Mr. Wilkinson?
I have several things to add, but...
Go ahead, Bill.
I was intrigued by the after-school mon- monitoring or tutoring program. Like to ask, how is this structured? Is it limited to a certain number of students, that they have transportation on, and parents have to bring them? Anything you can tell me about?
We do have the activity bus that runs every evening, and the activity buses that run the main roads.
Right.
They run the main highways on. But we do have activity buses that provide the meal at the end of the day, and then the tutoring teachers are here with them. But does that answer your question?
Not partially. How many teachers do we have?
Three.
Three.
Yes, sir. And to be honest with you, it has not been utilized as much as we would like in the past, and mainly it's because of transportation, to be honest with you. I've dealt with this in the past, and the only way that we could increase number of students was actually provide transportation to the door, because there's so many people that cannot come out and pick up their kids at the, at the end of the hollow, or at the end of the, at the end of dirt road, and so forth, that I've only seen numbers increase when we could actually, when we provided transportation to the door in the Harts area last year, our numbers exploded. And it would be the same here, I believe.
How many students do you have roughly now, that you don't spot?
That stay, I think this evening, I probably saw twenty-two, twenty-three students, I'm guessing, that were having the meal in the cafeteria.
I've often felt this is something that we really need to expand in this county.
Yes, sir.
Second question, I, it's not really a question. It kind of bothered me when I heard that we have eighty-plus students that no one's familiar with on the staff. I thought this would be, to me, a wonderful opportunity to do a study. If you had the names of those students, and get some staff members involved, and find out why we have those students.
Well, the goal at the end of the, well, not at the end of the year, the goal after we did that, everyone was provided the names with knowing that at some point, that we're gonna throw those names back out again, to see if they can come back down. I mean, I know that there are quiet kids, there are kids that, you know, that don't want to, but I, I feel the same way that you felt, like, you know, did we know three things and maybe just not five? Or, you know, did we get, maybe we can't build a relationship, but we do have a kid that'll say good morning, or good, you know, have a good evening or something, because that's better than nothing, to me. So they, they were all provided those things, and they know that it is coming, I still have those things, you know.
We will do a follow-up.
So, place the idea that they were going to make an extra effort to get to know those kids.
It's like one of the seventies kids, they don't talk to you, I mean, then, I'm in the hallway down there every morning, telling kids, "Good morning." I said this same kid, "Good morning" every day, because I've been out here since school for, this morning, he stopped and said, "Hey, you know Mr. Brown?" I go, "Good morning." He said, "Check out my new boots." I go out in the car, and it took six weeks, and it only took six weeks.
But it worked.
I just wanna say, I don't know where the young man went, but I was really impressed with your students.
Absolutely.
They were great.
Mr. Broden, Vincent, yeah, they did, they did an excellent job. Are these still in the...
Well, my hands, I'm...
Is it, was late Monday here?
Yeah.
Thank you.
He might be an awesome guy.
Is he hiding in my office, is he sleeping on the couch?
He's working dead.
Waterboarding twice, three times.
We commend you on it, job well done. Okay.
Okay, there you go.
There you go.
Are your ears burning? Were your ears burning?
That's the least I've heard him say here. Well, you know, there's a lot of great things going on here, we commend all of what you're all doing. Two things kind of came together for me. One, when you were talking about testing.
Yes, sir.
And, you know, I've never been a great proponent of testing for testing's sake. Many, many years ago, when there wasn't a lot of testing, I wanted to test students to see what they were deficient in. I didn't care how we ranked versus this guy here, or that one, it didn't matter to me. I wanted to know if that student over there had a weakness, I wanted to know what that weakness was, so that that teacher, and maybe the teachers that had them next year in the year, they could work on that, and, you know, see what their weaknesses are. So you explained to us, or shared with us, so that you're doing some things in that, in that regard.
Yes, sir.
And I think that's what testing should be, all be about, not comparing.
Driving instruction.
You know, that prepares and stuff, this doesn't work. Find out what the needs of the kids are, and then work towards them. And then as you get closer to them, helps to do that. And the other part of that ties right directly into it, because I think that's a personal trait, or type of thing you're doing. Then I think the trauma, and so on and that too. So those two, to me, came together as a theme in the school that made it a personal thing, that you're looking at the personal characteristics of that student, both academically and socially, as, you know, student, as we all want for it. And I think that's a thing that I feel here at this school, and, you know, even with your students that talk, and everybody else, and it carries over to all the other things at once, student activities, everything there are. But it all comes down to, you know, the personal things. And you all do tremendous things with that trauma thing, which I really commend you on that. And I know this keeps growing and growing, and hopefully, but it's there if needed. And then along with what Carrie and they do with the after-school type thing, weekend things, those kids are unfortunately in need. And we all know that these students that may be not identified totally, but that was, had difficulties at home in many ways, some don't have home, but, you know, as defined anymore. But you're all doing some things there that, once again, the personal part of it is what I think permeates in the school in me, and I feel, I get a feeling that, that being here tonight and other times.
Yes, sir.
Would you share with us anybody who's on your LSIC?
Yes, actually, actually, we have Mr. Pauli is here with us tonight, and also we have Mr. Settle, Pauli Smith, Matt Miller, Jessica Frye, and I, and Mr. McCormick. That is our entire LSIT, except for Ian and Jennifer. But it is, but that's the entire team.
Well, we, you know, want to thank you all for what you do, because LSIC's required, but you aren't required, let's make it principal strong, aren't you?
I do not.
You don't, you don't have to do those things, and so just thank you for participating and being a part of the school activities, you know, if you are all involved. Once again, you've got a long day, you've been here all day long, you've got to listen to all this, and you put your willing to do it, you do it for all the things that go on with your, with your school curriculum. But if you don't have that, then, you know, your faculty doesn't have the input, then a method then of sharing that with everybody else.
Yes, sir.
So we thank you for that. Let me thank you for hosting.
Thank you for being here.
And we'll come back in a couple of years, and we'll give the...
All right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, that would complete our LSIC presentations for the seat. If you all have things to do, you're welcome to, if you want to, offend us at all, or do some paperwork or administrative things here, if you want to, you can listen to those, it's up to you, but you don't have to. Okay, a motion, look, the administrator, please. Mr. Wilkinson. Mr. Curry. Mr. McKee.
Item A, school volunteers on two on occasion, may also serve as bus shack rows, branch public museums, academic competition, school athletics, and have to put in volunteer board at the time.
We want to have questions? You might have any comments about anybody? Not sent on this? Oh, yes, on the administrative. Let's go to the finance section, please. Okay, Mr. Smith made the motion, seconded by Mr. Curry. Mr. Ginn.
Yes, sir. Item A, schedule of invoices totaling seventy-seven hundred fifty-four thousand four hundred seven dollars ninety-one cents, attachment is concluded, invoices are available for public review at the county office. Item B, county pension for the following retired employees paid for from excess levy funds.
Very good, very good. Did you search for...
I was expecting that you take the name a lot. Yeah, it's a romance, but...
Yeah.
Okay, she could get in.
Yeah, I got work here.
Yeah, maybe, a lot of people hurt nothing. Okay, then I'm all against on the finance item. Personnel, then, motion, please. Brad made a motion, and Mary seconded it. Kurt, again.
Item A, employment of short, long-term substitute professional personnel. Item B, employment of substitute service personnel. Item C, employment of service personnel. Item D, transfer of service personnel. Item E, employment of extracurricular personnel, and there is a name here. You look at line number six, Amy L. Atkins withdrew her bid, so strike that name. And in line item five, Arrela Brumfield will be assuming both the thirty-seven and thirty-five run. Those are two different runs, but it is one student, and she was the person with the most seniority, and bid on both of those.
Okay, so Arrela Brumfield will be the itinerary specialist, plus eight, round thirty-seven.
For thirty-seven and thirty-five.
On the third guy.
Yes, they involve the same student. And she had bid on both of those, and when Ms. Atkins removed her bid, that allowed that to assume. Item F, a leave of absence, and if you look, the abolish extracurricular service posting, CIS twenty dash seventeen, CTE PK bus operator, and CIS twenty dash eighteen, CTE PK bus operator, we need to abolish those, so that we can repost them correctly.
Okay.
That's all it has.
All right, is there any questions about this personnel? Is that an all yes, Phil?
Yes.
All yes on personnel. All right. Board members, anything else on your mind to say to me? Mr. McKee, if you have anything to say? So I don't have a thing on. So let's adjourn until October the fifteenth, two thousand nineteen, six p.m. We're going to Harts PK at eight p.m. Motion, please. Carol? Mr. Curry, seconded, oh, yes?
Yeah.
We're concluded. Step forty-eight.